Meeting to order, first item will be adoption of agenda.
Move.
If you're in favor, motion is carried. Delegations for minutes, I'll review the number of departmental reports for the first quarter of 2012. First one for receipt is the fire department report of the court.
Move.
Motion.
On receipt then, all is in favor, motion is carried. Fire chiefs here.
Yes.
Well means.
And again, thank you. And on page seven, when you talk about the daytime response levels, continues to be a significant challenge. And I was reading in the paper a little while ago, it seems like it's a problem with a lot of municipalities with volunteer fire departments, and that some of them are now training their staff to have that dual function of being the volunteer fireman during the day. Is that something that we think could work here, that's been looked into?
For the chair, staff, you mean, other staff?
People who work, yes, for the municipality.
Sure, you know, we kind of use all the help we can get. One of the problems in our communities is the fact that there's not a lot of industrial or retail business. The business we have is very small, so they don't have a lot of employees to be able to supplement through the volunteer side of the fire department. So we're looking for all kinds of different ways to solve that problem. We've got a lot of ship workers and things like that. It's been an ongoing issue, continues to be an issue.
Do you think it would be interest from town staff?
There has been over the years, yeah.
To do that, then at least you know they're around.
CIO, can I maybe comment on that as well?
We do make provision for employees that do wish to work for the fire department or volunteer with the fire department, and in the past, as the fire chiefs' reports indicated, we've had employees that have been daytime responders and employees within our organization. Sometimes we're, I think Gord's training program is too successful, because in the recent case, we've had a firefighter move on to a permanent firefighting job. So it's a little bit of a balancing act that we have. But we have had employees ask about it, we do make provision for it.
Great, I assumed you would have thought of it, but I just, interesting article on the sort of retail case.
All right, any other questions for fire chief? Seeing none, I just want to congratulate you again and your staff for a very successful youth camp. I hear that some of us were up there to see you graduate, and I'd just like to recognize that again, a lot of hard work on your guys' part, and yourself as well.
Maybe also, I just had, I attended the school education day tonight at the fire stations, and Gord treated me around all different stations in Athens. The kids were really engaged, and I said, wow, it was really nice to see, and just the variety and the pacing of the sessions, I thought was wonderful.
Great.
So, well done.
On the radio over here. Excellent. Nothing further, we'll move on to the parks and building maintenance report from the superintendent. On receipt then, those are moved, secondary, all is in favor, motion is carried. Our superintendent is here for answering any questions. Members of council, may I have a council question?
Thank you, and to the chair, to our superintendent, page ten, you talk about the renovation of the office at Dusty Den, and I'm assuming that's the B.C. ambulance site?
No, it's actually the remainder of the footprint of the building maintenance service. We're looking at shifting over our bylaw enforcement officer and setting him up there, and we might also have room for the support staff member as well.
If you can get some funding for the B.C. ambulance.
That's all right.
All right, anything further on that? Then we'll move on to the rect department reports.
Move.
Thank you.
Sir.
On receipt then, all is in favor, motion carried, and our rec director is here to answer any questions or make any further comments. Very successful fitness studio operation there, and I just wanted to assure people that I was not responsible solely for the $10 million strides on the road, although I've done it.
Strides.
Why is the one?
Yes.
And I just wanted to say too, that it's great to see the training programs that you've got for staff, so that our existing staff can have greater capacity to do other jobs, that seems like a good use of our caliber that we already have. And also, the advertising, the marketing going into Facebook and social media, and I was just wondering, do we do anything, do we ask people when they sign up, how they heard about the course or the program, just to get some feedback about what's effective to draw people in?
No, we're not at this time doing that. We have in the past, did a couple of surveys, just going there, but not on an online basis. Counselor Grant, Kim, that is, and Pete.
Yeah, Jim, the, with Paul, I was wearing out our ellipticals as fast as he is, if we got, I'm sure you've got a plan for replacing that equipment, it seems we're going to be, you know, at that, at that kind of usage, it's probably more than we would have anticipated. And of course, we don't want to run our equipment, get it, be so vulnerable once we use it anymore. So I'm sure we have a replacement strategy in mind, and if not, or so, what are we doing?
I think it's in our financial plan as well, either Jim or Director Finance.
If you look in each year of the capital plan, you'll see there's recreation equipment. This year, we've got another three core machine, and it's not that one of the two ones that we've already got is worn out, it's that they're, I think Jim's told me, they're the busiest machines in the exercise center, so they'll be adding a third one to try and keep the customers from having to wait too long. And as we go out in the plan in future years, you'll see that the budget for capital equipment for the rec centers goes up and up and up. Jim has a, basically a schedule of what he figures machines are due for replacement. The normal lifetime of these machines is shorter if we've got an extraordinarily high customer load, right? It's really not that they're rated for a number of years, it's they're rated for a number of hours of use, and if you're using them every possible hour of the day, you will need to replace them sooner than the manufacturer might have suggested.
We also have an extended warranty on all of the cardio equipment, which is the ones that wear out the fastest, so we have an extra two years of that, so a lot of them are on a five-year warranty.
We're also sort of subject at this time to being a bit, a new kid in the block, if you will, of the flavor of the month, because as Courtney proceeds with his expansion, which will have a similar sized fitness studio expansion, then I'm sure there'll be some balancing out over time, obviously able to start construction this fall, complete next year, so probably looking at a year of having the normal use, and that'll probably be, although I'm sure it'll still be using.
Yes, thank you for your report, it reminded me, I was supposed to send on thanks to you from some taxpayers that appreciated the earlier opening and the later staying open on Saturday, so thanks for that on behalf of them.
All right, any further, seeing none, we'll move on to planning, building department reports, our planners here. Oh, sorry, capital, I have one too many. Capital report, we have our engineer here, so I'm watching you receive that, would be on it.
Move.
On receipt then, all is in favor, motion is carried, and any questions for engineer? Go ahead, council question.
Thank you, and for the chair, the two crosswalks that are primarily servicing the schools, the one on Rob, and the one on Florence and Guthrie, do you think we'll see those before the end of school year?
No, we're probably going for September 2013.
Oh, thanks.
So it was just on that, the traffic beacon, that's for the crosswalk, is it?
That's right.
It's a flashing, flashing light.
So nurture down was down by Guthrie, where the saleish, from this, yeah.
Anything further, seeing none, we'll move on now to planning, building.
Move.
Thank you.
Second.
Payroll receipt, carried, planner is away, so CIO, you have your four, any questions? Planner and CIO, they'll need the goal base report this week, so we are not clear as well. Go ahead.
So page eighteen and nineteen both show, it appears that the three amigos have enclosed, and have they reapplied as the amigo adventures?
Yes.
Is there anything to report on that?
Staff are working on the application, I would anticipate the report coming forward, not to the May second meeting, but the council meeting following that.
A revised application?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just had a question on process, just on deciding the process, so do people apply for subdivision at the time they apply for rezoning, or does the rezoning come first and then subdivision? I noticed that some of them are on several sheets.
Rezoning would be normally dealt with first. We also look at, as the application proceeds, concurrently dealing with the subdivision process that's involved as well.
Okay, so there is a bit of overlap.
There is, depending on the nature of the application.
Lovely, and on the Lazo Road, the application to the campground, I'm going on page eighteen, I was thinking that this is the existing campground up there?
Yes, it's related to a tax amendment that comes out of the OCP process, it's just one of the implementation steps that we'll be doing to ensure that the campground can be a continued legal use.
Great, thank you.
Counselor, talk.
Just looking at the building inspections and building permit quarterly review, we have four building permits, and that's it.
That's it.
So I'm assuming we get a high degree of customer satisfaction?
Well, in the most recent permit that was issued under a new enhanced building permit process, it was applied on one day, and it was issued by before noon the following week.
Cool, good.
So, yes, we are, we are able to do that quick turnaround, and a lot of that has to do with the applicant themselves, doing a lot of pre-work for us.
So are we able to utilize our building inspectors in other ways? I mean, because they can't be doing much.
Yes, what we are, what we are doing right now is, one of the building inspectors, we are utilizing the oil and planning department to deal with some of the backlog that we have, and that's one of the projects we have is to deal with that, and so we're looking at, we're using that resource there as well as reclassifying that position, the building inspector, to focus more on the planning side, and go down into one building inspector for the meantime.
Great, all right, anything further? Seeing none, we'll move on to staff reports. So at page twenty-five, we have the report from our Director of Finance on a financial plan and tax rate bylaws, and two recommendations for your consideration, that the financial plan bylaw and the tax rate bylaw seventeen point six and seventeen point seven, each reported to council for a first, second, and third reading. Assuming those pass, those will then come to council for those readings next week.
So move. Second.
So will those move together?
Yeah.
Discussion.
So, so we're looking at a 2.8 percent increase, is that in review currently?
Two point eight percent on all classes of property except commercial, which is 1.8 percent. And again, I assume that your revenue affected and policies from the previous bylaw would bring you in place, so that you would provide a 100 percent spread between commercial and other classes of property.
That's great, thank you. And I just have one quick question too, on page thirty-five, it shows the dollars per tax per thousand, and I just wonder, is there an easier way we can present it, the figures, you know, particularly for the public, because I think it's really meaningful if someone knows.
Page twenty-seven is probably your best, we're looking at it for an average house.
One second.
We don't know the school taxes yet, but that's what we've done in the past, is show an average house. We use this one page here to show a couple of different components of the tax bill, and once we know what the school tax amount is, we'll be able to.
And can we produce it in some diagrammatic form, you know, this is your dollar, and you like to hide that some.
Administrator and finance department staff are working on some new ways of describing that in English, that will go out to part of the tax bill.
Lovely, lovely, yeah, I guess the figures are really good to look at, but you know, it's sometimes easy just to have that clip, that quick image that you can, yeah, lovely, thank you.
That's my pleasure.
That's all.
So just to add to that, I know we're at the conference in Park, so we talked about how easy it was for people to compare, perhaps on a more of a monthly basis, and compare it perhaps to how much they pay for their cellphone, or how much they pay for their TV bill, and do some comparison that way.
The CIO has worked on some of that, that is one of the, one of the charts we're looking at producing, to show whether municipal taxes fit in with that monthly payment that you're making, as well as utilities, so you can see where those fit.
Great, thanks.
Used a, this apple drafted that at one of the presentations I did, you know, professionals certainly triggered some good conversation. Counselor, Ken?
Yeah, so I don't have a real big problem with the 2.8 percent based on the fact that we're going to be doubling our road paving, some of the projects that we've got. Would like to have seen with that 2.5, but I think we put quite a bit of effort into getting it to where it was, so I'm good with that part of it. I'm still struggling with the $25,000 a year for the water meter project. I just look at that, there doesn't seem to be any plan there at all, and when you really look at where you're going with that, if we do 50 water meters a year, it'll take us 72 and a half years to get the last 50 onto the system. Now, when I was out there campaigning, I talked about fiscal prudence and not wasting money in doing things like this, and to me, this is a clear case of doing that. I don't think that that's been thought through one iota, it's just a matter of putting some money aside and trying to make a project look good that really doesn't, in my opinion, isn't going anywhere. So I won't vote for the budget if we keep that in there.
All right, certainly entertaining emotions not reheard, but Counselor Fletcher?
Well, again, I believe that the $25,000, staff informed us that there are multifamily units that have not been completed, and one multifamily unit alone would cost $15,000. Staff also informed us that once we did advise the community of what the water rates would be, that people had come forward requesting a water meter, so I think obviously there's still some work to do, and staff made it really clear they have a use for those ones.
Hey, Counselor Tom Grant, you're next.
Well, a couple of years ago, when some counselors voted in this whole idea of a pilot project for water meters, that's what it was supposed to be, a pilot project, and now it's going beyond the pilot project, now we're putting it into the budget for another three years or five years, and it's carrying on. And just like Counselor Ken Grant said, we're gonna, by the time we get the last 50 water meters in, we'll have replaced the first water meters eight times. So there is no plan on this, this is just, you know, it's no longer water conservation, it's not water measurement, or it's fairness, or something, you know, it, there's no business plan, there's no thought put behind this, it's just, it's an ideology, and I think it should be stopped. When we talked about it at the all candidates meeting, and the issue of water meters come up, everybody at the table, it was a pilot project, it's done, and now here we go, we're continuing on. And knocking on doors, they made it quite clear, they, most of the people I talked to were not in favor of water meters, and why are we carrying on with this when we have no money in the budget and no intention of completing the project? Why not just stop? I mean, $100,000, or $75,000, where are we going to spend on this? We can be using that for walking trails and sidewalks, why are we continuing on with this? It doesn't make any sense, and if it was your own money, instead of treating this gas tax money like monopoly money, you wouldn't do it. So I don't know why we're taking taxpayers' money and doing this.
All right, well, I think we are at the risk of going on into a debate that we've had already at this table on several occasions, if there is a motion that somebody wishes to make to amend the budget, this would be the appropriate time. I don't think it's helpful to discuss things that we've already discussed, and I think we need to move forward with the budget, either as is, or subject to an amendment that we can speak to. So is there anyone who wishes to make an amendment?
I'll make a motion that we take the $25,000 for water meters out of the budget.
All right, sir. That's been moved and seconded. All right, now, if you could perhaps combine your remarks to things that either might be new, or helpful to the discussion, then we will carry on.
Well, what's helpful to the discussion?
Well, I don't think we need to repeat the same points that have been made over and over again, and, you know, when we're talking about the last election, we're talking about.
Those points are still valid.
Yes, of course they are, but we don't need to necessarily hear them again, we have already debated this issue and made a decision on it, and here we are, looking at the budget, and understand that there may be some counselors who don't wish to support the budget, which was included, and such a motion, motion to remove it has been made. So on that motion, Counselor Swift, do you have your hand up, or you're pointing?
I don't know if this is speaking directly to the motion, but what I was going to suggest was that that money be put towards, you know, determining leaks in the system.
That would be an amendment, well, actually, it would be a separate motion, it would have to be taken out and then perhaps put back in, and then we can carry this to another matter, so it's not really an amendment, but you have to speak to the motion, I understand what you're saying, maybe follow that. Counselor, press.
Yes, well, you know, get, first of all, on the topic of leaks, and which is, you know, a very good point, to detect our leaks and water conservation measures, but it's my understanding that through the regional district, there is a program to see this happen, and I think, you know, certainly education on water conservation and the checking for leaks, it does seem that that is the appropriate place, and why put money in the budget for something that's already within the budget, the global budget, that relates to the Comox Valley and the Comox Valley system. So, and with regard to taking the money out for the water meters, I'd just like to say, you know, I know, you know, most people don't want meters in the town for a variety of reasons, and, you know, people clearly said that on the doorstep, they don't want meters, and I think that's, that's very fair, and I, you know, I honor and agree with their wish not to have meters. But of the people that I've talked to, Comox residents, even ones who are strongly opposed to meters personally, you know, have no objections to the personal choice side, that if somebody wants to request a meter, then, in the same way as that people didn't object to the fact that water meters are going into new development, so, you know, I almost think it's, let's say, storming a teacup, but, so there is that issue of the personal choice, and I think it's a small number of people, but it's, you know, that fairness element, and that, as Counselor Fletcher has mentioned, with stratas, metering stratas, I understand, and maybe this question for staff, that Courtney has on its strata development meters, is that, that they too?
I believe that all of their strata developments, they have four or more in this one year, I believe that's what Kelly told me several years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, Ken Grant.
Okay, so what I'm looking at here is, we really have no end result, or it doesn't seem to me that there's any end game here for this, and so what we're now going to do is put $25,000 in for the next, I think it's three years, four years. So what are we going to do after that time, when it's not gas tax money? And now it is going to go on your tax bill, not that it isn't already, because that's money that could be being spent somewhere else, this is just going to go on, and on, and on, and on, and on, and infinitum, and there's no plan in the future to come to an end to this. This was not well conceived from the beginning, and I think we should stop it now, while we have the chance.
Right, anything further, Counselor Swift?
Well, I understand in my conversations today, that of the 1,300 meters that have been installed, only 50 are requested going onto metering, right? So I think it's a really low ratio.
It's not entirely unexpected at this point, given that people are going out to see how it plays out, and probably are hesitant, I think our Director of Finance pointed that out until they see some more results. I for one have done it, but, you know, I'm doing that out of a belief of faith, and I believe that over time, it'll probably, you'll see more people do it, whether there's 50 or 100, it doesn't really matter, as long as people are given the choice. It is part of our infrastructure, it will remain a part of our infrastructure for years to come, and really, in terms of the business case, we're not reinventing the wheel here, many communities have done this, and many places across this province, and also across Canada, so, you know, pilot projects or full community meter projects have all achieved various degrees of success, and we've done what we can, previous council did vote in favor of the, of the program, and I believe this motion came forward because it was desired to continue to give people the choice. There may be a handful of people that have signed up to, if there is money available to put them in, and some stratas, so it has no impact on the budget in terms of dollars and cents, it's, it's gas tax money that we're, we've decided, or at least to this point, to allocate, and, you know, if there's future gas tax funding, who knows, after 2015, but I think it's a wise use personally of a very small portion of the gas tax money, and I believe that it's, over time, it'll, it'll prove to be a good investment in our construction, I believe it has been to this point. Yes?
I cannot believe for a moment that you can make a statement like that, when 50 people have signed up, we've spent over a million dollars putting in water meters, so 50 people can pay the metered water rate. I mean, that is an absolute joke. That's so far from a business case, it's so far from common sense, it's so far from reality, that for us to be spending that kind of money, and to say it has no impact on the budget, it's going to impact the taxpayers in this town when we start doing projects in the future, that with, out of general revenue, out of tax dollars, that could have been used with gas tax money. We could take that money, that $100,000, and we could build sidewalks with it, but no, those sidewalks are probably going to come out of general revenue somewhere down the road. It has an impact on the taxpayer, it has an impact on the budget, but maybe not this budget, it's going to have impacts on future budgets. So pretending it's monopoly money is a silly thing to do, this is real money that we can use to improve our town.
Yeah, I don't believe anyone on this council that I've ever sat on has ever considered anything to be monopoly money, I don't think that's a fair comment, but I would, I would urge you to speak to the issues and not, you know, put.
But you come off of these condescending statements, and it basically.
On the contrary, I don't think so, I mean, point of order is really what I'm trying to bring here to this. Nobody's being condescending, we're trying to talk about the issue, and using the terms of monopoly money, other than to achieve a headline somewhere, I am.
I'm not looking to achieve a headline.
On the order, please.
You know, the investment that we've made in this will prove over time, I'm convinced, as many communities have been, to be a wise investment, and we'll have to agree to disagree as to that, because we know that water infrastructure is going to become the big issue, one of the big issues along with sewer infrastructure for the region, and water rates are going to go up. So if people have the choice to make wise decisions on conservation and to pay less, I'm all for that. Anything further to add to the debate?
The water rates are going to go up, there's no doubt about it, the water rates are going to go up to improve the quality of the water, not the quantity of water. If you look at the capital projects that the water committee are looking at, 95 percent of those dollars are being spent on water quality, not water quantity, so.
The less you use, the less presumably that you need to build the pipes and the reservoirs, et cetera, but that's another debate. In any event, the motion to remove, any further discussion on that? Okay, you ready for the question? All is in favor of motion to remove, those opposed, motion is defeated. Back to the main motion. The motion is that bylaws seventeen twenty-six and seventeen twenty-seven, the financial plan bylaw and tax rate bylaw, reported to council for a second and third reading. Any further discussion? Yes?
Just a final comment, I'd like to thank staff, I think the budget process was very well done, and of the time that I worked on a budget, it was a very good project, and I appreciate the work that was put into it, and I think we've got all at the table here doing a good job, so thanks for everyone for the work on it.
Certainly after those remarks, it's been a challenging budget, and I do appreciate the work, and particularly brought back to carve down at 03, so very good news story for the town. All right, all is in favor. story for the town. All right, alls in favor? Those opposed? In favor, three opposed. All right. Correspondents, we have from Staff Sergeant, sorry, Staff Sergeant Gibbons, who's the acting superintendent. Much to the producing reports. You grant him the watch.
I'll move receipt.
And a secondary on that? Alls in favor? Questions carried. We've been holding off and having the superintendent and acting appearing. So hopefully we'll see the new guy here, which I understand will be sometime in the next, so hopefully the next committee will hold when we consider these. Unless there's further questions, the comments we can move forward.
Just a question, just a comment to say that, you know, it's good to see that crime is going down in the Comox Valley in nearly every category. Apart from rate and entry, there's been some significant reduction. So it'd be good to have somebody here and just find out what's the Comox situation. Are we any different from the average? Is it any better here? So that's great.
We certainly look forward. Be welcome to the superintendent. Once he gets here and gets his seat underneath him, I feel we'll have him. It might not be till the fall, depending on how things go. But we typically do invite the superintendent here every quarter. All right. Any further? Seeing none, then we do have a motion to exclude the public as per section 9 of the community charter. Go ahead, Karen. Alls in favor?